Seven oh one, I'll call this meeting of the Board of Voluntary Order. Roll call please Heather.
Alderman Lane.
Here.
Alderman Foreman.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
Alderman Borak.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Magway.
All right, we do have form this evening. I get information that Alderman and I agree with. Please join me in the pleasure of the evening. My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to shuffle it again around a little bit and allow our guest speaker to give us something on the battlefield and read that. So, you want me to come on up here?
You can. You can wander around now.
Yeah, I do a lot of wandering around, I need to. I want to thank you for allowing the friends of Centray Battlefield back again. And I guess it was about six months ago that we were here, asking and begging for your support, of which you came through wonderfully. I just want to kind of refresh you that when we started with this idea of the reenactment, we had three things in mind. We wanted to bring new people to Centrayia, and we wanted to have education for those people, about history, about Missouri, and about Centrayia, and about Boone County. And we wanted to provide good, fresh entertainment for young people as well as elderly people. I think we may have accomplished that. This evening we got Jim Lee, who's going to give you a report on the income and expenses. Got Bill Miller here, who is accountant and treasurer to give Jim support if needed. But I kind of started out, if you recall, that we were looking for around forty-five thousand dollars in that neighborhood to put this event on. And you came across very, very strongly with us. You provided twenty thousand dollars, which I called it was in a reserve. It was something for us to call upon as it was needed for the purpose of promotions and advertising. Well, out of that twenty thousand, I hope to report, happy to report to you that we only used eight thousand. So, we appreciate you backing us. Actually, you got us off going early, that gave us the confidence to do a lot of the other things. We had the fundraiser that Jim was involved in, and a number of other kinds of events that brought some funding to us. And the end result was, the reenactors said it was one of the best attended reenactments they've been to. So, that made us feel good. And then, the people who attended as spectators, I didn't hear anything bad. Maybe they didn't want to tell me, but I noticed a lot of things that didn't go as it was supposed to. But I think most of the people who came enjoyed themselves. So, in that respect, I think we had a successful event. And when you hear Jim relate how our budget and our figures went, I think you'll agree that things turned out pretty well. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Well, you have, I gave everybody a copy in front of you, and I won't bore you with this reading over, but I'll make, I'll draw some conclusions there. The way it's broke down, under the reenactors, we see our budgeted amounts there. I summed up all those. We actually paid seven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars in bounties to the reenactors. The notation there on the hay and straw, that was a zero, because actually we had some generous individuals that donated all our hay and straw. And then, on the barbecue for the reenactors, we obviously went over budget on that. Under construction projects, once again, under the temporary bridge, we had budgeted a thousand dollars, and we were able to keep that well under that, primarily due to the generosity of people that helped work on that. And Boone Electric and some others that came through with some of our materials that we used to build that with. The stage was a zero item too, primarily because, well, totally because, we were able to borrow the stage from the park department. And then, the church, the mock-up of the church, you know, that came in under budget, primarily because of Charlie Cunningham was able to put that thing together, you know, with stuff that he's ground up, and I thought it turned out, looked real nice. Payment to speakers, we were, that was, we had several speakers that worked for nothing, and so, when we were setting this up, we really didn't know what we were going to need for that category, so we tried to put plenty in there, and that's where it came in. We paid two musicians that played, Dave and Kathy Perrin, played quite a bit. We paid our, what did you call, Chris Edwards' title?
I call him a lot of things, but right now, I think he was, he was kind of our writer, a scriptwriter.
Yeah, we paid him, and then paid a fiddle player for that, that's where that total went for that. Some of our rental stuff, the PA, Rogers Rental came, you know, once again, his generosity, he really stepped it up and provided us a lot of stuff at a cost that the average individual probably wouldn't be able to do, just his generosity. Porta potties, we were a little bit off on that budget, but we had, it required more. Missouri Civil War Reenactress Association gave us guidelines on what was needed for the reenactors, and what was needed for the crowd, so we had eighteen porta potties out there, so that was quite a few. That smaller amount, under tables and chairs, you know, you can bank Rogers Rental for that too. Our cart rental, that was just transportation from the parking lot to the battlefield, that was for handicap. That was something that we thought about later on, but, you know, I'm glad we did it, and it certainly was utilized and needed. Under our printing, I just kind of summed up the total of our printing, came up with that twenty-nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And that was brochures, schedules, signage, thank you banners, that was all totaled in there together. I separated out our T-shirts. We did spend twenty-five hundred dollars on T-shirts, of which, we have several leftovers, so if you're lucky, buy a discounted T-shirt, they're available. Insurance, that was the, we had budgeted a thousand dollars for insurance, but we were able to piggyback with Missouri Civil War Reenactors Association, and so our insurance came in at a smaller amount. Video productions, that was a sizable amount. There was a production of the video that was on the website, and then we also utilized that video with some television advertisements. We were a little bit over budget on that, but that's the way that worked out. Website and social media, that came in right on budget. Marketing and advertising, I, we originally budgeted eleven thousand dollars for that. I broke it down as to print advertising, radio. And then, question on that train right there, that was a, that was an after talk, that some of these Star Dinner Train came up and proposed that we do some sort of a joint projects, which they hosted and we helped with a train robbery, and I think that really went.
They want to do it again next year.
All right.
And so, there was some fees associated with that, with primarily just renting uniforms and things like that for the actors. And then, of course, there was three hundred and sixty dollars on postage. So, the actual cost, and I'll preface that by saying, that does not include the multiple dollars that was donated with in-kind stuff. I mean, I didn't, the city provided some trash receptacles for us, some mulch to help us deal with our wet conditions. We had a lot of just volunteer labor from the Quanis Club, the Boy Scouts, the MMA, I mean, we had a lot of volunteer help, that I don't know really how you put a dollar fee or that, but it would be a sizable amount. So, anyway, the actual cost of the reenactment was forty-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, not including all the volunteer help. And then, on the backside, on this page two, we have the summary of the income. We actually had twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-seven in cash sponsorships. That's people that gave us cash, and that includes the eight thousand from the city of Centrayia. So, that was, that was a good thing. We collected parking fees of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. We had vendor registration of four hundred and fifty dollars. We, the next to, gun raffle proceeds and the actual sales, I suspect there's some mixing of those two, those two categories, but it was impossible to separate out, because it was a lot of cash and it just got in the same box. But anyway, we estimated that the gun raffle generated fourteen hundred and sixty dollars, and we had sales of T-shirts and miscellaneous items of twenty-eight hundred and twelve dollars. And then, the proceeds from the barbecue fundraiser that we held in July, we generated four thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars on that, for a total income of forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the difference is the bright hat, three thousand dollars, which is what's showing in our bank account right now, so I would entertain any questions.
Is there any type of feedback from the community as a whole, as a business owner, do they see an increase in sales or something like that? Stimulative effect?
Not that it's been shared with us. I know I saw several reenactors out the night before having dinner at the roundtable.
I hope we introduce some new people that don't come to Anchor Fest and other events to the Centray area. And, yeah, I don't know how you evaluate that, but I hope we meet some inroads with people who haven't been to Centray before.
I spent a period of time in Columbia.
Yeah.
And there, I've heard a lot of good comments from people that I've, you know, that I've come in contact with. Said, you know, they either read about it, the dinner train thing got a lot of free television for us. Both Channel seventeen and Channel eight covered, you know, the robberies on TV, which is really free advertising. And I, and there, I had a lot of comments from people in Columbia that said, you know, man, I saw that on, even though they didn't come, they said, well, we read about, then we read about it in the paper, and we were aware of what was going on. And I think that's something you really can't put a value on. Like, there are people who, you know, I've sure done, over the years, a number of boards in Columbia, and part of it is, I think sometimes we don't do a good job of asking for help in Columbia, or getting involved with things they do. And, you know, that's our fault.
Just for your knowledge, the city of Columbia gave us five thousand. And that was through the convention and visitor bureau. But that came out of the treasury of the Columbia, of the city of Columbia. So, they came to, and I have to say this about the Missourian, I was not one that's very impressed with either the newspaper, but the Missourian did a tremendous job in covering our event. And I think there's so many people that read about what happened in Centray through the Missourian, well, the Tribune did good too, and Rudy Keller was here and did a lot, but the Missourian really went out of their way. They had five or six people that came to the event and worked with us, so that was great. I'm real proud of the Missourian.
Anyway, we owe the city a big thanks, and the people, I think, the volunteers, there must have been at least a hundred and fifty people that pitched in and gave a time, and like Jim says, a lot of, a lot of stuff that was either undercharged or no charge at all.
Right.
But Centray has a habit of doing that. I've been around a long time, so I've seen quite a bit of that go on.
Yeah.
And in the, in our early fundraising efforts, you know, Jack and Bill and I, early on, we were, we were dead in the water, we were making no headway at all. And it wasn't until the city jumped in and said, okay, we're gonna, we're in this for at least, you know, the twenty thousand dollars. It seemed like that added validity to what we were doing, and then, seemed like after that, it just got the ball rolling, and then we were able to do better elsewhere after that. So, for that stimulation, we thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your reporting.
Okay. No other questions, I guess we'll leave.
All right, thank you gentlemen. Have a great day.
Thank you for having me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Okay.
The consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. One second. I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda as written. All who are in favor say aye. I propose. Counts payable over twelve fifty?
I have a motion to approve the counts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in a grand total amount of three hundred and five thousand nine hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I have a motion, a second to accept counts payable over twelve fifteen, amount of three hundred and five thousand nine hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents. All who are in favor say aye. I propose. Okay, comments from citizens? Open that, and if there's anything done, I'll close it. Economic development report by a chamber of Congress representative? The report is in your packet.
And there is a financial report as well as the minutes.
Yes, sir.
On the chamber assets, this Martinsburg barbecue, what's that about?
Martinsburg barbecue?
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong piece of paper or something.
No, I have no idea what that is.
Checking twenty-two thousand CDs by Martinsburg barbecue, twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I have no idea what that is, sir. It's a. Which I suspect they're not supposed to be there, or at least not up there for Martinsburg, I'm not sure.
Do they have counts in Martinsburg, right? Maybe.
Yes, that would probably be what it is.
So, where are the checking and CD accounts at?
At the other banks. I don't know which ones are which, but I do know that we have money at all banks.
I believe the checking account is at US Bank, not part of the.
Thank you.
Any questions? Public care, is enough scheduled, is that still a case? Action agenda, finance, hunting? No fines? No permit licenses? Legal? Approving settlement with Centrallink. Here's the ordinance, require two reads? Discussion?
Centray was one of dozens of cities affected by the decision of Centrallink to withhold taxes. Originally, the cities of Troy, O'Fallon, and O'Rock filed suit. MML provided coordination of lawsuit, and it eventually compelled them to pay what we thought was their fair share of grocery receipts taxes. As far as it reaches settlement, the amount that Centray stands to receive is stated in the ordinance, it's a little over twenty-four thousand dollars. Total settlement include over five point six million throughout the whole state. The original draft model was from the MML, and included an option of sending them some portion of our total. We deleted that from the ordinance that's presented to you, as we understood that that was not something the Board of Voluntary wanted to do. Okay. If there's any other questions, myself, or Barrett.
Do you want to get into any future revenue that might be adjusted?
Well, they also do promise to continue to collect and pass the tax through for at least the next five years, and not to lobby to get rid of the tax on their services, essentially, in other telecommunications services. A little somewhat similar to a case a number of years ago, actually, the same attorney Mulligan, John Mulligan handled this, who worked on past suits where different telecommunications companies have argued that cellular devices weren't phones and other things which would exempt them from paying some of the taxes. This is another, I mean, I'm sort of a series of those kind of.
Actions.
Actions that eventually resulted in.
Did you finish all of them?
Well, no, not exactly. There is a separate lawsuit still going on, which, against some of these companies, including Centrallink, by a different set of cities, which argues some similar points. I think I've got the MML discussion handy. The, see if your question is among the frequently asked questions. They've, there is, there is a. Future taxes will be paid. There is a separate case with Aurora and some other cities that raises some of the same issues involved in this case. If that case is settled, or final judgment is entered, that could affect the taxes owed by Centrallink to other municipalities. Now, final judgment in favor of Centrallink on one or more of the future tax items will apply to all municipalities with about the same type of telephone license tax ordinance. And it gets into some of the details, but assuming that that case, which is being, which they are, asking for a ruling on what's called EUCL, which, I'm trying to find where that was described here. There are some, there are some similar issues being discussed in that tat, in that case. Our settlement amount is, there's a very small chance that they, that that case could come back and we could not be able to continue to collect the tax in the future. But this is, this settlement is, or assures us of these taxes that we're getting today.
Are there any more, I mean, I think.
Aurora.
They have it with AT&T and some of the others.
Yeah. Yeah, that one's all done.
Are these some of the last ones then, that are?
I believe so. Well, at least for, well, I mean, the next step would be to go back, to go to the legislature and try and get out of the same tax, the slices taxes, and, and, you know, the, things are similar to grocery receipts taxes on communications devices, for whatever reason that they can turn up with.
The one thing I thought of that I could add is, the twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-five thirty-six is shown in the ordinance, is what the settlement is for. And my best belief, if it's on schedule, we should receive it maybe as soon as January or so. I did read about a, just a headline, so I don't know the details, that said that there were some issues with other settling cities that might, my readout was to delay the receipt of it. So, it may not be in January that we've received it, but hopefully, not long after that, even with these issues. As Heather knows, the certified copy of this ordinance and certified copy of our city code of dealing with telephone license tax needs to be sent to them by the first part of November, and so we'll have to kind of do that by the passage of this tonight.
Any further questions? Alderman Lane, would you introduce this one, please?
Sure. Bill number?
Twenty-seven twenty-four.
I move the bill number twenty-seven twenty-four be given its first reading by title only.
Second? I have a motion, a second, that bill number twenty-seven twenty-four be given its first reading by title only. All who are in favor say aye. I propose. Continue, please.
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a settlement agreement with Centrallink, accepting the tax payment and authorizing the appropriate city officials of the city of Centray Missouri to execute the settlement agreement and any other appropriate documents on behalf of the city of Centray Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-four be given its second reading by title only.
Second? I have a motion, a second, that bill number twenty-seven twenty-four be given its second reading by title only. All who are in favor say aye. I propose. Continue, please.
An ordinance approving a settlement agreement with Centrallink, accepting the tax payment and authorizing the appropriate city officials of the city of Centray Missouri to execute the settlement agreement and any other appropriate documents on behalf of the city of Centray Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-four be adopted by no call.
Second? I have a motion, a second, that bill number twenty-seven twenty-four be adopted by our roll call vote. All who are in favor say aye. I propose. Roll call vote, please Heather.
Alderman Foreman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Borak.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
All right, I revoke, bill number twenty-seven twenty-four passes, and now the consubordinates number.
Twenty-seven eighty-five.
Next is adopting a policy resolution of the city of Centray, Missouri, to establish a formal policy concerning the rehabilitation of sidewalks. We've discussed this for the past few months. This is a resolution that has some, do you have any further questions? Further discussion?
There is, I should mention that, as part of this, there is a agreement that follows along with the policy that's part of this, called Public Sidewalk Repair Financial Assistance Agreement. And this does deal with public sidewalks, not private sidewalks.
All right.
We've been doing this for some time, we just didn't have, we didn't have it written down as far as we define. So, this resolution formally established that process. For property owners to seek financial assistance from the city for rehabbing the public sidewalk next to their property, that's subject to the amount budgeted annually by the city, you know, by the board here. And to some extent, we can set sidewalk priorities, so we're running, if it looks like we're not going to have enough money to cover the part of, to all the. So if it looks like we're not going to have enough money to cover the part of all the requests that year, we can prioritize them by what the city, what the board has decided. It's not like, it's not going to fix private walkways up to the porch or the street or any of that. So if they do a project where that's all included, we'll measure out how many, we did that on a project just recently. We'll measure out how much of that project went to the public sidewalk, how much went to, you know, the public walkway. Only, and it is reimbursement only. So we're not going to pay anything upfront. The form would allow me to sign an agreement when the not to exceed amount is twelve fifty or under. If it goes over that, then we'll require the mayor's signature. But these, you're still required to fix the sidewalk in front of your house and ordinance. But for those people who step forward and want to do the right thing, we can, we can help them out with the cost of the materials and how good the thing is.
All right, Alderman Ward, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number?
Twenty-seven twenty-five.
I move that bill number twenty-seven twenty-five be given its first reading by title only.
Second?
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-five be given its first and only reading by title only. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, continue please.
Create a bill adopting a policy resolution of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to establish a formal policy concerning the rehabilitation of sidewalks. Just one read.
Yep.
I move that the bill number twenty-seven twenty-five be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second?
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-five be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please, Heather.
Alderman Borak?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Foreman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee? Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven twenty-five passes and now becomes resolution number?
R dash fourteen dash oh-nine.
And for the record, it's our policy number twenty-four.
All right. All right, next, purchasing, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Luber Engineering of Jefferson City to provide engineering services related to the application for a safe routes to school grant. This is an ordinance that requires two reads.
I just was curious, I haven't seen this Luber Engineering in any of our other stuff that's ever used.
Well, Christine?
Yes, Christina.
Christina, she's the one that did the planning for Switzer?
The designer.
The design for Switzer.
And is she working on her own then?
Yes.
Yes.
She works on her own.
And she was at the time, but she didn't, the Switzer project. Which is actually, I guess, our most, although this is a sidewalk grant. And there's a, this, the most difficult part of it and the significant part of it is to help figure out what to do with the stormwater drainage along Jefferson Street. And where we can put a sidewalk and take care of, and still, you know.
Service the school or the neighborhoods.
Right, without, you know, it come of the structure that's going to work with the wood right now are very deep ditches at different points on both sides, both the east and west side of the street. So whichever side, or if we end up doing some sort of back and forth sidewalk to get past all the barriers, including a significant gas pipeline along there. It's going to help, but she has experience with stormwater management projects in the city. We did look at some other firms, but they were the ones that we had the closest, most recent relationship with on a similar project.
I remember we had some issues on Switzer Street. Were those engineering issues?
That was what she was told to do. She was told to raise it up to a point utilities. And then, the landlord decided that we were going to lower it back down. It needed to be lowered back down. Which is similar to what, we came up with almost exactly the same thing as what she had designed earlier on. What it was concerned was point utilities.
But you understand my question here?
Yes.
The mayor and myself and Lynn are.
And Phil?
Were.
Yeah, and Phil was still in there too?
I think I felt participated, yeah. We looked at the different, the grant is, application is due by November fourteenth, so we had to move quickly. I remember, you know, when we met two weeks ago, we kind of agreed to have a look at the possibilities. Because a full-blown RFP was not, there wasn't time for it. We can, if we want, after the application, go back and look again. Although it's frequently done, that, you know, the person who, you stay with the gal running when you go to the dance, is the word. It's a, a cliche. If she, if, you know, the person who designed the preliminary application is often used, that's okay.
Anyways, this is, the ordinance requires two reads. All of your votes, if you can do this, please.
Bill number?
Twenty-seven twenty-six.
I move that bill number two-seven two-six be given its first read by title only.
Second? Have a motion second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-six be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, continue please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to execute an agreement with Luber Engineering of Jefferson City, Missouri, to provide engineering services relating to the application for a safe routes to school grant. I move that bill number two-seven two-six be given its second reading by title only.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-six be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, continue please.
And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to execute an agreement with Luber Engineering of Jefferson City, Missouri, to provide engineering services related to the application for a safe routes to school grant. I move that bill number two-seven two-six be adopted by a roll call vote.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-seven twenty-six be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please, Heather.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Foreman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Borak?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven twenty-six passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven eighty-six.
Thank you very much. All right, old business. Do you want to have any old business?
I got a question. Merritt, where are we with, doing something with the, an ordinance for dogs at Anchorfest or pets?
For the, say it again, for what now?
For pets at Anchorfest.
Prohibiting pets at Anchorfest.
I don't think I did anything about a request to do that.
We want to restrict those, I believe.
Other than service dogs?
Other than service dogs.
Other than service dogs.
Yeah.
Because it's becoming more and more of an issue.
Only Anchor Festival or other kind?
We would just assume make it so that it would be more generic.
Events?
Yes. I don't know that we could use it for anything other than Anchorfest, but if it becomes a problem elsewhere, I'm certain it would be wise to include that.
That's where the issue arose.
All dogs except service dogs, is that what you're saying?
All pets.
All pets, putting down.
Ferrets. Ferrets and canaries and cows. We did have a snake at the, somebody right there, a python.
Pythons, yeah.
At the, the, oh, tree fair in Fulton, isn't it?
There was a snake at Anchorfest also.
Consternationism.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I can look, I can, even once like the next, I guess we don't have anything coming up late in our future, but you'd like to have something to be at least discussed, not adopted, okay, general group. Okay.
Any other old business? I think you know. I have a couple of appointments to make this evening, and then a couple of catch-up appointments. First off, I would like to reappoint Lee Allen Smith to planning and zoning. His term expires this year. And it is a five-year term. So it ended in twenty nineteen. It sounds so far away.
I make a motion to accept the annihilation.
Second? Have a motion second to accept the mayor's appointment of Lee Allen Smith to planning and zoning for a five-year term ending in twenty nineteen. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, all right. Next, with the resignation of chairman Pat Olson. I've asked Harvey Millian to fill into that position. And so I would like to appoint Harvey Millian to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that term would complete Pat's and end in two thousand eighteen. I'm moving to accept that. Second? Have a motion second to accept the mayor's appointment of Harvey Millian to complete the term of Pat Olson ending in twenty eighteen. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close, thank you very much. Next is appointments to the Board of Commissioners for the Enhanced Enterprise Zone. And would like to reappoint Tom Copenhever to the board. This is a three-year term.
Well, let's see, it's a five-year, it's a full five-year term.
Full five, okay.
Four years, so. And so the twenty nineteen.
All right. That's right. So for, appoint Don Copenhever to the EEZ Board for a term ending in twenty nineteen.
Motion, we accept the appointment.
Second?
All right, have a motion second to accept the mayor's appointment of Don Copenhever to the EEZ Board with a term ending in twenty nineteen. Also, I'd like to, all those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close. Okay, and also, Tom Millsberry has agreed to be reappointed as well. Let's make that nomination, that point, and that term will also end in twenty nineteen.
I'll make a motion.
Second? Have a motion second to appoint Tom Millsberry to the EEZ. All those in favor, stat?
Aye.
Close. Again, that term will end in twenty nineteen. All right, those are the appointments I have. You notice in the paper, two weeks ago, the Centralia High School cheerleading team took first place in state again. I have a proclamation prepared, but I'm going to ask them that they can come in on the third of November, which is our first meeting next month. And I'll present them with a proclamation at that time. And keep our volleyball team in your thoughts as well. They're doing very well this year, so there may be two problems. Alderman, have new business?
I just want to make a clarification of something that was in the paper. The comment about, that was printed, that what I was saying about paying your utility bill and that that precluded you from filling out the survey? That you couldn't, what I was really, not online, yeah, you were paying your bill online that it precluded you from filling out the survey. What I was trying to get at was that if you're paying your bill online, you weren't going through the act of filling out a check. You know, going through this, putting it on an envelope and sending it in. All I was trying to get at was that it was less conducive for you to fill out the survey because you weren't going through any physical sending something in. It wasn't that you couldn't still fill out the survey and still mail it in. There just wasn't a physical part to it. You were doing everything electronic. You could still physically fill out the survey.
Come in the city hall and say, I think it's a survey.
Or come in physically, you know, and drop it off. Nothing precluded you from physically doing that, obviously.
Obviously.
Yeah, that's all I meant. The way to quote, right, was that if you paid your bill electronically, you couldn't do the survey. And that, that obviously wasn't true. So I just want to clarify that. I guess, since I was here, I read in the meeting that, that, that you intended, so I didn't, I didn't notice that. But that is a good point to make, if anyone saw it, is we do encourage anyone who can. Absolutely, I'd want to, and they'll be taking surveys until October twenty-ninth.
All right, thank you. Any other, Alderman, have new business? All right, Matt?
I did have one thing, and I haven't, we've gotten a couple of letters to the city about some people who are upset with stormwater issues on the north part, north of Highway twenty-two. Specifically attorneys for both the BACAs who own the State Farm business and the building, and the building there. And the Prangers have requested a meeting to discuss this stormwater issue. I've worked with Merritt, Tom Schneider is the attorney for the Prangers, asked for a response. And to one extent or another, they have suggested possibly the city has done something wrong here. I don't, you know, I don't want to comment on any of the city's legal risk or, or only however slight a grade it is. But I do think that we can invite all the parties together again for another meeting to assign that we do want to find a common acceptable solution and see what the city can learn about a role in future stormwater issues. Currently, I'm sure you're aware, we have not assumed any authority in stormwater management because, primarily because no federal state law compels us to do that. And, you know, just as importantly, we don't have a source of funds dedicated to stormwater management issues. That doesn't mean that we aren't concerned about it, and the people on this board aren't concerned about trying to handle, you know, stormwater. You know, I've seen the same in other cities, and the minute the water hits the ground, it's suddenly our water. But if water falls, they haven't blamed us for the rain yet, so. But, you know, it is, it is an issue, and not only in this part town. But it might be time to start having a discussion about what role people want the city to take. My impression is that they're more interested, that, that, you know, that people would love us to find a way to take care of it without increasing or coming up with some additional revenue source. I don't think that's possible. But at least we can kind of have that discussion in this particular, you know, start that discussion about this particular case. So I'm suggesting that we get, bring them, you know, in the city hall, sit down, meet. I see that as more as a staff meeting, but, you know, as long as, you know, if everybody wants to have that discussion, we could do it. You know, it's an advertised public meeting, but I was thinking more staff or maybe staff and the mayor. Is it, I just want to let you know.
Is it, is it your feeling that, that those parties are thinking this is a recent issue? Or is this something?
It, the construction of the new lumbered buildings, the, is a triggering event.
Intensified, the.
Yeah.
The, and you have to understand that I'm a plant guy, so this is where I come from. But there has been a population of cattails on that property for a long time. And you don't grow cattails in a.
And you don't grow cattails in a nine-month period.
I think that's an excellent point.
Right.
I find it interesting that somehow now it's becoming a problem.
Well, that's why I chose the words that that was the triggering event in terms of interest in solving the problem. There have been land disturbance, there has been, people have moved dirt there before and that has an effect on the way the stormwater flows.
Yes, sir.
Is the city actually named as a party in the suit? Not in the lawsuit.
I am honestly not aware of the lawsuit and the city is not...
The manager, manager of the cross said that there was a lawsuit, so I thought I'd ask.
I haven't seen that. That may be...
The city's not been served any legal papers to be part of the lawsuit, I'll say that.
It's romantic that there isn't a lawsuit, but that doesn't mean that we're involved.
Yeah.
So what exactly, pardon me, but what exactly do the attorneys for the Prenger family in Nancy Bak or State Farm Insurance, whichever, what exactly do they want from the city then?
My own personal feeling is it's kind of a fact-finding type of inquiry. They're looking to see what we knew when we knew it and all that, if I'm right.
Yeah, I mean, they want the problem solved, but also they're, you know, we don't have... What they're asking for are, in my opinion, things that we can't, you don't have the legal authority to do, let alone the budget to do. And the Bakas are asking for one, the Bakas and their attorney are asking for one thing, primarily a meeting. The Prengers and their attorney are going to come up with solutions, but they're not. So, you know, what they think are solutions.
Are you going to give the law, I'll try something up tonight, bounce it off you tomorrow and see if we're speaking the same language. Thank you.
Is it?
That is it.
Alright, Matt?
All the trouble I wanted to...
Your turn.
Maybe I can just supplement what Matt was talking about on this, on this matter. I'm in agreement with what he said and as I said, I'm not aware that there's any lawsuit involving the city. Not to say there couldn't be some other kind of lawsuit involving some other parties, private parties, but besides the fact of not having any state or federal law, there's no city ordinance that requires us to do anything either. So even if we've been notified about things, it doesn't mean that we have an legal obligation to do anything. I think it is a good idea to be a facilitator, a mediator to get the parties together if they are inclined to do it, to sit there and be some kind of private solution, but I'm not aware that there's any involving the city. This, and this issue originated before Matt took over, I mean, way before Matt took over. It just, well, and as Mr. Lee pointed out, plants don't grow overnight. So, so there have been, it goes back. This is, this is a flat area, I mean, it's, it's been built on and we're seeing the consequences of that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing? Okay, any asthma eyes?
Oh, oh, yeah. Why can't we go back?
Okay. Three, one, two, three.
There will be, there will be a reception for Bill Miller honoring him for forty-three years and he was city treasurer tomorrow in the community room from five to nine. So anybody that would like to attend is more than welcome to.
I'm not, this is, I'm not trying to take anything away from what you have said. He said at a meeting that I heard that he was not sure that forty-three years is the number.
According to the start date we have, it is the number.
Well, he...
We can...
Does he think it's more?
We double-checked it.
He's not sure.
He thinks it's longer?
It's a, it's a, it's a long time, whatever it is.
The blacks go somewhere.
Looks again.
I was going to say. If that's what's on the cake, that's on the ice.
Alright. Saturday morning through Kiwanis, we are going to plant. All of you are welcome to attend, bring a long-handled shovel, replant some trees for Arbor Day here in the city square. We have the blessing, I'm sure we'll be blessed with the park director's...
Starting at nine o'clock.
With the park director's guidance. So. Under asthma eyes, anybody? Do you got one thing real quick? How close are we to, this is more for Merrick, I guess. We're about ready to send another packet into Sullivan?
Yes, we are.
To get our subdivision ordinances and some other things on the website. Alright. Anything else? Thought I had?
I make a motion.
Second. Alright, I have a motion second to chair, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Close, thank you very much.